Good evening and welcome to everybody here in council chambers and those who might be participating via the internet. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. We'd like to turn some time over to our city clerk for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
President.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Dykens.
Here.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I would like to invite those who would like to participate to stand with us for our invocation, which will be given by Pastor Kent Simmons of the Oasis Church, and afterwards we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather this evening for the betterment of our city and for its citizens. Grant wisdom to our council members in this meeting, discern right from wrong, courage to pursue justice, unity to work harmoniously for the good of all. Guide them to remember the true needs of our people and our decisions that bring order and prosperity to our community. Protect and honor their sacrifice, time and talent. Your name we offer this prayer.
Amen. I will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and for decision decisions made relating thereto. Item number one, A Heritage Preservation Commission Partial Term Appointment. The Heritage Preservation Commission currently has one vacancy due to the resignation of Commissioner William Resigou. This is a partial term appointment with a term starting October 2025 and ending December 2026. Staff has received applications from the following interested individuals. Laura Huxley, Gina Falsetto, Linda Thompson has withdrawn her application, Ruth Zimmerman and Lynn Thompson-Kinney. Residency and voter registration have been confirmed, council discretion. Discussion. Are any of these candidates from that I just named, are they here tonight and would like to say anything? Okay, we have three of you. If you'd like, sir, if you'd want to lead off, please.
Sure.
Yeah, come here and say your name, please.
Never done this before. Name is Gino Falsetto. And how are you guys doing tonight? Good? Sweet. I just was very interested in becoming part of the Heritage Commission, just, you know, I fell in love with Kingman when I moved here a few years ago and the whole Americana, and I believe that the history and preservation of downtown and other parts of the city need to be preserved, and I think that I could definitely be a good part in playing along with that, so.
Okay.
Pretty much it.
Thank you. Any questions for Gino? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next. Ma'am.
Hi, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. I'm Lynn Thompson Kinney, and I'm a sixth generation Kingman kid, and born and raised. My grandmother, Noreen Reichert, was instrumental in preserving and saving our Benelli House years ago, and so I'd really love to carry on that and be a part of the community and really help with preserving our heritage and history of our town.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Lynn, council? Thank you, Lynn.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. My name is Ruth Zimmerman, and I, actually, you have my name on both commissions, so I'd be happy to be considered for either commission that you feel I have the qualifications for. You know, I've, we've owned a home in Kingman since 2012, lived here permanently for the past five years. I enjoy the community and have a background in historic preservation, archaeology, history. When we were living in Kingman, the first time through, I was the field manager at the BLM office. I also served as the associate district manager for the Colorado River District, so I'm familiar with the area and would love to serve the community. Any questions?
Thank you, Ruth. Questions for Ruth?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Counsel, any discussion? We need to go, we, actually, we are going to move on to item B, and then we will go into executive session to handle, take care of both items A and B. Moving on to item B, 1B Parks Aquatics Recreation and Trails Commission Partial Term Appointment. The Parks Aquatics Recreation and Trails Commission currently has one vacancy due to the resignation of Commissioner John Angelson. This is a partial term appointment with a term starting October 2025 and ending December 2026. Staff has received applications from the following interested individuals. Erin Pitts, Kenny Schooly, Sarah Alsberry, Jasmine Tarkowski, Vincent McCowen, Rebecca Simone, Andrea Penn, Ruth Zimmerman, Dana Sandhop, and Anna Masterson. Residency and voter registration has been concerned, confirmed. Of course, that's up to our discretion. Are any of those individuals who I just named off here? Okay, would you like to share, say anything? Would you come forward, please? And please state your name.
You guys are pretty familiar with my face. My name's Dana Sandhop. I just came from work, actually, not real work, but in any case, I had a great time working with y'all on the obscene issue, and I felt very compelled to come and see if I could be involved somewhere. I bring a lot of energy, a lot of energy, and I'm rather tenacious, but I do look forward to being involved. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dana. Any questions for Dana?
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And next?
Hi, I'm Jasmine Tarkowski. I've been in Kingman for over 20 years now. I have two kids that are very active in the community, as well as myself and their father. I'm already participating in several volunteer groups within the county. I have a background in grants and finance, as well as mitigation work that we did in my previous job in the Wallopies and some trail days that we did there. I wrote a letter in as well when you guys were asking for consideration for an indoor community sports event, so I feel like I can bring some good qualities to the table, and I look forward to seeing what the commission has to offer, so.
Okay, thank you, Jasmine.
Yeah, thank you.
And any questions? Since we've all been quiet, I don't think there are. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Yes, would you like to come forward, please?
Good evening. I'm Sarah Alsberry. I'm currently the Environmental Health and Safety Manager at Griffith Energy, which is the large power plant west of town. Moved here about a year ago. I have three young children, who very much enjoy, of course, all of our parks and other outdoor activities. I'm a geologist by education. I love hiking, and it just generally any kind of outdoor spaces, public lands are something I really enjoy. And then just one other thing I wanted to add that has changed on my application is that I'm doing the Kingman Citizens Academy right now, which I'm really enjoying, and for anyone that hasn't done it, highly recommend, so just wanted to add that.
Great, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Any questions for Sarah? Okay, thank you. I think we've all had a chance to take a look at the information sheets on our candidates. And once again, candidates, we appreciate you being here actually in person tonight, and thank you for your willingness to be on one of these commissions. We need a motion then to go into executive, our executive session to discuss these candidates.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will be back shortly, thank you, if you can give us some patience.
Well, thank you, all of you, for staying around. Once again, thanks to all of you for staying here in chamber and being part of this process. We appreciate that.
Is your mic on?
Yes, it is. Once again, I want to thank all of you who put your applications in to be on a commission. That says so much about your willingness to serve our community, and we truly appreciate that. And it makes it difficult for us to decide because you're all very qualified. In the end, we had to pick two, and so for Heritage Preservation Commission Partial Term Appointment, we would like to ask Lynn Thompson-Kinney to serve on that commission.
I'll second that.
And we have a mo-- I'll make that motion. I'm sorry, we're ma-- I'm making that a motion, so we're making a motion for Lynn, okay?
And I'll second that.
And you'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. And then one B, Parks, Aquatics, Recreation, Trails Commission Partial Term Appointment. We would like to invite Sarah Alsberry to be on that commission. So...
Is that a motion?
And that's a motion also. Thank you. I need to work on that. And if we have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Once again, thank you for your willingness to serve our community, and please continue to put your applications in because we always have openings on our commissions. Okay. Moving on to number two, awards recognition. To a Kingman Police Department Property and Evidence ALIP accreditation. The Kingman Police Department has been awarded the Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program ALIP Property and Evidence Accreditation by the Arizona Association of Chiefs of Police. This demonstrates the department's commitment to excellence in evidence, handling, storage, and preservation. Combined with recent emergency communications accreditation and the ongoing law enforcement accreditation maintained since 2019, Kingman is now one of only six agencies in the state to hold the ALIP trilogy of accreditations. Chief Cooper, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to share this accomplishment with you and the community. The accreditation of our property and evidence section marks the final step in achieving what ALIP refers to as the trilogy. The accreditation of our agency, our dispatch center, and now our property and evidence section, this accomplishment places us in a unique position as Arizona is the only state in the nation where agencies can achieve all three levels of accreditation. And as the mayor shared, we're one of six in the state that have that status. I want to provide just a brief summary of accreditation. Accreditation through the Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program, commonly referred to as ALIP, is not a self-assessment. It involves rigorous evaluation by outside agencies to ensure that we meet and maintain the highest professional standards. In fact, ALIP standards are recognized as being even more stringent than the national benchmarks established by CALIA. Several agencies in the state are dropping their CALIA accreditation and continuing with the ALIP accreditation. It is also much more affordable and more specific to the needs of Arizona law enforcement. The importance of accreditation is more than just a certificate on the wall, which we're proud of, but it's an ongoing process of accountability and earning the community's trust. It ensures that we operate under best practices, follow strict policies, and continually improve. For our community, it provides assurance that their police department is committed to the highest levels of service, excuse me, and integrity. Our community has always shown trust and support for the department, and we value that deeply, but accreditation goes beyond just a personal trust. It provides an external independent system of accountability. It's very special when people come up to me and they tell me that they support me, trust me, they support the agency, and they trust the agency, but with accreditation, they can more than just trust me or the agency, they can also trust the accreditation process. This accountability has become part of our culture. Every new officer that comes into the department enters into an environment where excellence and accountability are the expectation. The Department of Justice has also hinted that agencies receiving federal grant funding will be expected to obtain or maintain accreditation, and by achieving and maintaining these standards now, we're positioned to continue receiving federal grant funding and also future grant funding. Accreditation also builds leadership and professional development within our organization. KPD, the department currently has three ALIP assessors, trained assessors, who've participated in the accreditation of 23 agencies across Arizona. These assessors not only contribute to the statewide process, but they also bring back valuable insights and tidbits of information that help our department as well. And within the next year, I plan to expand that number to five assessors. Some of the agencies that they have assessed are Phoenix Police Department, Tucson, Scottsdale 10P, and even smaller agencies like Colorado City most recently, and Parker, Arizona. This process of leadership development provides a tool, preparing our command staff for future growth and succession planning. It ensures that our next generation leaders are equipped with the knowledge and the experience to carry forward this culture of professionalism and accountability. We also have a statewide leadership role in the ALIP program. Currently, Deputy Chief Joel Freed serves as the President of the Coalition for Arizona Police Accreditation. There's lots of acronyms. We call that Kappa. And Kappa is a member-led coalition of, through ALIP, that provides guidance, mentorship, and support to agencies in the pre-accreditation process and also in the post-accreditation process. Kingman's leadership role in Kappa demonstrates the continued commitment to not only for our own success, but to the advancement of professional police agencies across the state. Additionally, Deputy Chief Freed and Officer now Retired Deputy Chief Evan Coonert also teach and facilitate trainings at the ALIP conference every year. So in closing, I'd like to put this into a perspective that we can all understand. When assessors visit our department, I compare it to when you invite family members over to your house for Thanksgiving. When you know family members are coming, you notice the stain on the carpet, the cobwebs in the corner, the smudge on the glass. And even though your family members probably don't care too much about that, those things do matter to us because there's details that are important for us. It reflects pride, professionalism, and care, and this accreditation process and maintaining it assures that we meet all of those standards. So I'd like to take a moment, introduce my team that is here, some of the team. The two people that are responsible for the ongoing maintenance of the current property and evidence accreditation are evidence technicians and crime scene gurus, Betsy Hulano and Krista Kuffen. I thought I got timed out. Lieutenant Mike Godfrey is our Special Investigations Lieutenant. He's responsible for our Street Crimes Unit, Detectives, Child Crimes, Traffic, Property and Evidence. I'm missing School Resource Officers. He's responsible for a lot going on over there. Jennifer Sahaki is my Support Services Administrator, and Amy Kennedy, raise your hand, Amy. I can't see you with the light. She's the Dispatch Center Director as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'd also love to have an opportunity to take a picture with you, holding up all of our swag.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief? Okay. Well, Chief, thanks for all you do, and now you named five other agencies. Are those the agencies that have the ALIP? Even though, we know our agency's the best. We know your department's the best. We know that.
The state knows that as well.
Exactly. Good. But I have to make sure because our sister cities and the county, we want to make sure that we're way ahead of them, so that's why.
I will support that. Is that a motion?
We can do that.
I'll second.
But anyway, are those cities that you mentioned, are they are part of the ALIP?
They are ALIP accredited.
Accredited.
And the part that is impressive to me, and I'm proud of the, our assessors, is that they were either the, there's two, at least two, sometimes three for the larger agencies. But we've been the lead assessor in many of these. They're the ones responsible for putting all the information together, presenting it to the ACOB Board and the ALIP Commission. There's a commission process, and they recommend accreditation to the ACOB Board, which is the Arizona Association Chiefs of Police. And we have been involved with the largest agencies in the state, so it's something that I'm very proud of. Yeah, very proud of. And even the smallest ones, Colorado City's coming off this consent decree with the mess and stuff's gone up there. They've received accreditation, totally turned that agency around. The major's amazing. And Parker PD was the most recent smaller one. And then there's, obviously, we've had total 23 that we've been part of.
Wow. Well, thanks again. And yes, we'd love to have a picture, get it, and be with you, so. You have to arrange this, Sarah.
Well, I mean, you have to get them. I'll come down back. Come on down here.
Did you want one of your fun for your social?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Hey, Smiley. Okay. Moving on, item number two B, and of course, not to be outdone, of course, by our other public safety department, and we are proud of them too. It, two B is Fire Prevention Week Proclamation, and I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas the City of Kingman is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting, and fire remains a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks. And mostly electronics used in homes today, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium ion batteries, which is, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode. And the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium ion batteries. Residents should follow three key calls to action, but only listed products charge batteries safely and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And lithium ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, and improper use, such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification, or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire or explosion. And the proper disposal and recycling of lithium ion batteries helps prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risk in the home and community. And the City of Kingman's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety, education, and community outreach. And the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium Ion Batteries in Your Home, serves to remind us of the importance of using charging and recycling and lithium ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now therefore, I, Ken Watkins, Mayor of the City of Kingman, do hereby proclaim the week of October 5th through 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week, and urge all the citizens of the City of Kingman to check their smoke alarms to make sure they are working properly, test them monthly, and install new batteries annually. And of course, I have signed it, and our city clerk, Annie Meredith, has signed this proclamation too. And once again, we are proud of our firefighters. Many of you know, and you've heard me say this before, I have a son that's a firefighter back in Texas, and so I feel a special bond to our fighters and firefighters and all they do on our behalf. We'd like to get a picture with, I know we have Chief, was not, Chief Yerkes was not gonna be able to be here tonight, but he also had some of... Yes, Assistant Chief, we're glad you're here. There you are. So, would you like, I know, you're trying to be low-key, no, it doesn't work that way. So, I would like to invite anybody else up, who would like to? Okay, well, let's go get a picture.
Get up here, Chris.
Keep going. Need somebody taller.
I can attest personally to the importance of disposing of lithium ion batteries correctly. Some of you might know, I used to be the owner of Bulldog Disposal, and that is where we have had some of our fires, is because of lithium ion batteries getting dumped out and causing sparks, and so it is a big problem. So please, tell your friends, be careful with those batteries, and let's dispose of them properly. So, thank you. Okay, item two C, Kingman Youth Marines Day Proclamation. And I am proud of this group also. They actually carried our American flag in colors in the last parade, Annie Divine Day's parade, and I have a proclamation I'd like to read. The Young Marines is a national youth organization that promotes the mental, moral, and physical development of young Americans by focusing on character building, teaching leadership, teamwork, discipline, and leading a drug-free lifestyle. And in 2015, the Kingman Young Marines Unit was started by the Dean W. Ryder Detachment Number 887 of the Marine Corps League, and has participated in numerous events that have honored our nation's veterans. And the Kingman Young Marines Unit has demonstrated exceptional dedication to these values, serving as role models for their peers and contributing positively in the Kingman community through volunteerism, community service, and patriotic civic engagement. And the Young Marines instill core values of honor, courage, and commitment in their members, which prepare them for future success as responsible and engaged citizens. And the City of Kingman recognizes the outstanding efforts of the Kingman Young Marines and the adult volunteers who support and mentor these young leaders. And it is fitting and proper to acknowledge the achievements and contributions of the Kingman Young Marines and to encourage continued community support for their mission. Now therefore, I, Ken Watkins, Mayor of the City of Kingman, do proclaim October 17th, 2025, as Kingman Young Marines Day in the City of Kingman, and urge all citizens to recognize and honor the positive impact of the Kingman Young Marines on our community and to support their continued efforts to lead and serve. And of course, it is signed by me and our city clerk, Annie Meredith. Do we have anybody here from the Young Marines tonight? Gentlemen and youth, would you like to come forward? Mr. Skankie, would you like to introduce all of you?
Absolutely.
If you could, please. And at the microphone, please.
Not familiar with all this, but thank you so much for this opportunity and for recognizing our Young Marines. This is only two of our about 28 Young Marines that we have right now. We did start back in 2015, and it's been slowly growing and becoming quite the activity for these youth. As a retired Marine myself, there were certain things that I learned throughout my Marine Corps career that I wish I had known when I was their age, and it doesn't have anything to do with weapons or killing the enemy. It has to do with that self-discipline and leadership. And so, that's one of the reasons why I really wanted to start this program. Terry Flanagan, obviously, is the real impetus behind it. He's the one who asked me to do it, and we've been doing it for the last 10 years, and it's been just a really good experience and really helping these kids out. So what I have here, my Young Marines I have here today is Lila Wilkinson and Ryder Wilkinson, brother-sister combo, that are part of the unit now. And they are representing, good representative. Watch you turn around so everybody out here can see you. There you go. Perfect. So thank you so much for doing this. October 17th happens to be the Young Marines' birthday back in 1959, so that's why that date was picked. So I appreciate you doing this for us.
Great. Well, Mr. Skankie, Mr. Flanagan, thank you for being mentors, and so important to our youth, and helping them along and being a great example to them. So, and Brother and Sister Wilkinson, thank you for being here. It's so great. Okay, if we could get a picture with you, that'd be fine? Lila and Ryder, right?
Ryder. Lila and Ryder. Up, down, up, down. There you guys, getting your exercise today.
Actually, we'll let you guys hold it.
There you go. That's a great one.
You can hold that? Actually, maybe kind of us. There you go. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who? Oh, okay.
Okay, we do have one more proclamation that we would like to read, and I know it's been a busy night already, but we truly like to recognize all the good works that are going on in our community. So this item two D is Kingman Cancer Awareness Month Proclamation. Whereas the mission of the Kingman Cancer Care Unit is to provide financial aid and moral support to the patient and their family, they are an organized group of volunteers who educate the community on available resources to control cancer. And the Kingman Cancer Care Unit is dedicated to informing and reminding the population of the facts about cancer, its early detection, its prompt treatment, bi-competent medical methods, and its prevention where practicable. And the Kingman Cancer Care Unit assists patients with transportation, out-of-town room and board, personal equipment, health equipment, and other emergency assistance. Whereas these are just a few of the many ways the Kingman Cancer Care Unit services the needs of Kingman and the vicinity. And now therefore, I, Ken Watkins, Mayor of the City of Kingman, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Kingman Cancer Awareness Month. In Kingman, Arizona, furthermore, because early diagnosis of cancer can make a tremendous difference in the course of one's life, I urge the citizens of Kingman and the vicinity to take advantage of the services offered by the Kingman Cancer Care Unit. Of course, once again, signed by myself and our city clerk, Annie Meredith. Once again, we appreciate all of you. I can see you back, if you'd like to come forward, please, so we'd like to get a picture with you with this presentation. And we appreciate, once again, all the great service that is happening in our city. We have great examples in front of us, and we urge everybody to continue that service. Okay.
I could, oh, of course. I have a pink tie. Should wear it tonight, huh?
Can I say a few words? We have 50, we're 50 years old. Not me, our organization. And...
We know you're younger.
And it's just, it's just an incredible opportunity that you've given us to make our whole town aware of cancer, because we've all been affected by it some way, family, friends, whatever. So, anybody, spread the word. We need more members. We're happy to have new blood, and our vice mayor is a member of our group. She doesn't get to attend because she's here, so we're very grateful that she's here. So thank you so much. We're so grateful.
I gotta put the hat on. I love hats. My wife might shoot me because I'll add to my collection, but...
Don't be shy.
Yeah, that didn't help her, Mike. She needs to come down forward. There you go.
Great.
Oh, yes, we do. Thanks so much.
Love it.
Thank you so much. Thank you. You smile, I smile.
Thanks again. Item number three, Presentations, three A Aviation Heritage Center of Kingman Presentation. Paul Gaines and Tim Gerlach from the Aviation Heritage Center will present to the council their idea for a newly planned facility at the Kingman Airport and Industrial Park. Gentlemen, you're on.
Hello, we actually have... Yes, we have. We have a third member with us, Jill Gornetsky. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to share an ambitious vision. A vision that can bring pride, education, and economic value to Kingman. Do you have pictures? Okay. Well... Any moment before you, you're gonna see some images that are all from Kingman. Among these, there's an 18-year-old woman who gets her first flight at Walupi Field. A rare stopover of an amphibian aircraft from the Western Air Express at Berry Field. The transcontinental air transport sets up operations at Port Kingman. And in World War II, the Kingman Army Airfield is created and trains gunners for service in the skies over Europe and the Pacific. All of this was here in Kingman. All of these people and places have stories to be told. My name's Tim Gerlach. I'm the President of the Aviation Heritage Center of Kingman. With me tonight are our Vice President, Paul Gaines... Proudly located along Historic Route 66, it will inspire students, welcome visitors, and honor the generations who built our aviation legacy. For more than a century, aviation has been part of our city's identity. Today's Kingman Municipal Airport continues in that tradition. And we believe it deserves a home where these stories can be preserved and shared for generations to come. Our vision is not just to create a museum, but a community hub inviting to locals, inspiring to students, and attractive to visitors from across the country and around the world. Thank you, and Jill Gornetsky will pick over.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council for the opportunity to speak to all of you tonight. We appreciate it. So for the past six years, we've been working on a single vision. And is it lofty? Yes. But this has been unwavering. We have been unwavering in this endeavor. And we want to elevate our community with a world-class facility. And all of us, we have the passion, determination, and ability to make it happen. Why should any of you care about an aviation museum and education center for Kingman? Quite honestly, it's our youth. And if you take a look here, I put out a rallying call last night to Jody and the Team 60 of the robotic, Kingman Robotics. And all of these young people on a weeknight showed up here to City Council to support this endeavor and this goal. They don't, admittedly, they don't know a whole lot about it, but they know that STEM is part of it. I went off script a little bit and I'm overwhelmed by the sheer number of these kids, so I just want to shout out and thank them for showing up. The kids deserve to decide their future with their eyes and minds open to all opportunities. Manufacturing Day is right around the corner and we'll be busing hundreds of kids out to the industrial park at the airport to tour, tour the facilities, mine included. And the kids will get a glimpse of what their futures may be about. But what if they had an opportunity to participate in STEM-based curriculum and immersive events that could launch them into careers they would never, never envision? Wow. That is what we mean by elevating our community. Flying Fortress Parkway will become a beacon to exit I-40 and enjoy a one-of-a-kind experience. We know that Route 66 and the airport are a unique draw for visitors, international and domestic alike. But no longer will people make the pointed effort to come out to the Kingman Airport, peer through the fence, and wonder what has happened to the museum that vanished years ago. Instead, they'll discover a top-rated gem that will put Kingman on the map. We are committed to collaboration and we welcome partnerships with the other local museums and already have interest from the Commemorative Air Force and other aviation museums to produce events and share our resources. And we're very excited about that. We want to change Kingman's reputation as a drive-through town and make it a destination. Tourism dollars, as you all know, are felt by every sector of our community and this center will be a catalyst. We pledge to give back to our community with outreach to our schools and organizations like Team 60 that are just hungering for interaction with people that can support their efforts. And, and I don't know how many of you follow what they do, but they're incredible with the resources they have. I'm very, very proud of them. And so outreach to our schools and honoring our veterans, as we did Major Levend Farren for his 100th birthday, complete with the B-17. And we will keep the unique aviation history of Kingman alive, and that's a promise. Tonight, we're asking for your public support. And to unveil our project, I'd like to introduce Paul Gaines.
Thanks, Jill, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, and staff. When I first moved here, I began to learn much more about the history of the Kingman Army Airfield and other historic aviation aspects of the community. I also learned that many people here were not even aware there was an active Kingman Airport, much less other prior historic airports and World War II aerial gunnery training facility. So this is where our journey began. A few years ago, we had a visit from one of my customers who is now a friend of ours and on our advisory board, Tom Valentine. You probably won't know his name, but he's a well-known and respected Hollywood film art director with a strong and impressive background in aviation history, and he wanted to help. We have worked hard over the last several years putting together what you're about to see. We knew the facility had to be located adjacent to the iconic World War II control tower, which is clearly visible from the general public side and the aviation operations side as well. The exterior pays tribute to the look of the original World War II hangars and at the same time has many updated modern elements. So without going into any more of the design detail, I think the video itself will answer some questions and lead to new ones. After the video, we have allotted time for discussion and questions if you like, so please play the video. So what legacy are we all going to leave? We intend to create and leave a legacy of recognition, perspective, and inspiration. Thank you. Now we'd like to answer any questions you might have.
Council, any questions for this great, and with this great presentation? Thank you. Okay. Once again, Jill, Tim, and Paul, as you, most of you know, I'm an airplane nut anyway, so I'm totally on board with this. This is great. Of course, now putting it all together, financing.
Yes.
An amazing, but this is an amazing idea.
Yeah, this represents our first, our public kickoff, really. We wanted to have the City Council be first before we go public really at all, which will be at the Route 66 Festival this coming weekend, is our first kind of open presentation for fundraising. And then we have other, you know, larger plans for various foundations, private and corporate. It's going to take a lot of money, as you can tell, and we're well aware of that. We've got some preliminary numbers, but nothing finalized yet, but.
I like some of the pictures. I'll, actually, all the pictures were amazing.
Yeah.
But, and I've mentioned this in the past, there was one picture that I wrote that old, I think Ford Tri-Motor, in front of the old Kingman Airport Terminal, which is still standing today over on Bank Street.
Which is Brown Drilling.
Brown Drilling, that's correct.
That's their office. It's still there. That Charles Lindbergh, Amelia Earhart were in that building.
I know.
Yeah.
It's an amazing building. I've been in it a number of times, so I'm sure you guys have. So, yeah, we have a lot of aviation history here in Kingman, so.
We have a lot more than people are aware. And like the first airfield was downtown. It was, it was.
Wallop High Field.
Wallop High Field with a W. And that's some of the earlier, early, early images you saw that were downtown by the, by the.
Cemetery.
Cemetery. Thank you. Yes.
Okay. Well, once again, thank you for that presentation. And Team 60, we appreciate you showing up here and supporting this too.
Thank you very much.
So thanks again. Okay. Item number four, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. We have one citizen would like to share her comment, Kathy Tackett Hicks. Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, Staff. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I'm acting as the owner's agent in a statement. But before that, I really, I want to tip my hat to each one of you and staff because you are creating with your calm and steadfast leadership these types of groups. I mean, tonight's been outstanding. All the groups that have come across here are doing some great things and that really is a testament to your staff and your leadership. So I thank you. 36 years in Kingman, I recognize it and I want you to know I can see it. This evening, I wanted to make a statement on behalf of the group that is doing work, a development project along the Flying Fortress Parkway. They've asked me to read a statement. They've asked me to actually join the team again to see if we can get the project past the end zone, end line this time. I've agreed to do that because I think it's going to be another outstanding project. So I'll be working on that as well. The statement is, "On behalf of our team, Mr. William Pleas and associated entities, I'm pleased to share that the 1,300-acre development along Flying Fortress Parkway is moving forward with renewed focus. Our former partner, Mr. Leonard, is no longer involved in our project in any capacity. And with the settlement complete, we are committed to bringing this project back to life. We believe strongly in the positive impact it will have on Kingman, creating jobs, strengthening the economy, and supporting long-term growth. And we look forward to continuing our collaboration with city leadership to make it a success." I do have a lot of familiarity with the project because I processed the general plan and the rezon amendments. I'm looking forward to working with all of you and I'm hoping we can, you know, get this across the line this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Item number five, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council, if we all had a chance to take a look at the consent agenda, are there any things that need to be pulled? Seeing none, can we have a motion then approving our consent agenda?
Some of. I'll second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number six, action items. 6A Kingman Tourism Initiative Grant Program Update and Proposed Revision. On August 1st, 2025, the City of Kingman launched its first Kingman Initiative Grant Program, which provides funding to Kingman-based nonprofit organizations to support building repairs and structural upgrades that foster tourism and economic development activity. The grant application window closed on August 31st, 2025, and city staff received two proposals. Unfortunately, the review process revealed some issues in the application and award process that needed correction. These issues are related to procurement requirements. Staff recommends canceling the current solicitation and making the attached draft recommendations to the application process. Tim, do you want to lead off?
Thank you, Mayor. This item here, as, as you read, recently, council approved a tourism initiative grant and the intent of this grant was to promote tourism among, among the city, with, throughout the city. And we, we put the grant out there, had some interest in it, got two applications for it. One thing that we found during that review process were some errors that we had not foreseen or some problems that we had not foreseen. The, the biggest issue that we saw was while we offered up to a $30,000 grant for, for the applicants, it was a matching grant of a one-to-one matching grant, which then required them to basically a total project cost of $60,000. One thing that we, with our procurement, with our procurement guidelines or our procurement rules, anything over $50,000 requires a formal procurement process. So you have to publish it, you have to have a scope of work written, request bids, publish it in the newspaper, have a deadline for those bids to come in, have a committee to review that and all of these, you know, and then ultimately have those reviews and then, and then make that award. We didn't have that baked into this application process. So really, it creates this, this issue of awarding and then having to go through a procurement process and just got really, really messy. So what we're proposing with this, these changes, and we've notified both of the applicants and, and explained, you know, some of the problems that we were having with it. What we've done is, is we've, we've, to, in order to address that, basically, we're limiting the, the total project amount at 50,000. Then it will meet our procurement threshold, which then drops the, the. Then it will meet our procurement threshold, which then drops the, the matching to 25,000. So, we're offering a $25,000 grant, and it has to have a total project cost of less than 50,000. While we were looking at this, a couple of the other items that, that we're recommending, but ultimately, it's a council decision, you'll see in the packet, there were some red lines as far as new, basically, changes to, to the application process. One of the other questions that came up through this process was the impact of the, of the grant funds. How soon do we want to see those, basically, see a return on our investment? You know, is this a project that we want to see that return on investment within a year? Is it something that council is willing to wait on and allow it to go for, for past that year? So, staff's recommendations, and you'll see in the, in the packet, is that any of these grant funds would be reimbursable, and they'd be reimbursed after that project is open to the public, or, basically, the improvements are there and, and providing that, that service to the public. We are suggesting that the project timeline, that that project or that facility be open to the public within one year of that grant award. So, again, this, this is a recommendation from staff. Ultimately, it's a council decision on how, how soon you'd like to see that return on investment. But those are the, the big changes that we're proposing to this, and with that, our, our recommendation is to make those changes. Well, initially, the recommendation is cancel the current solicitation, make the attached draft recommendations, and then the, the new application process would begin, I believe it was November 3rd, so we'd open it back up. If everything looks good to council, we'll open it back up November 3rd, closing it November 28th, and then, applications would be reviewed and awarded on the January 1st, 2026, so. Be happy to answer any questions, and I've got Josh here that can help me wherever I missed.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Counsel, any questions? Yes, Counsel Dykens.
I didn't have questions until being here. Just an explanation of the procurement program. Under the previous, that $60,000 is in excess of the $50,000 city criteria. But if the city is only putting out 30,000, does that violate the procurement requirement?
Thank you, yeah. Mayor, Councilman Dykens, the, the way that it's written is it's a total project cost, so because the project, the total project cost is over that 50,000, even though the city's only contributing 30,000, it still goes over that threshold.
Good. Okay, any, any other questions? Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just, I had a question, because this, to me, is similar-ish as to what we do for CDBG. And I wondered, you know, advertising, we only received two applications. There's probably quite a few projects that would follow these guidelines and would be eligible. I, I would like to see what the city can do to advertise, because, number one, it's a new program. CDBG's been around a while. So, I would like to see if we can't get the word out a little bit more so, if, I don't know what we did for, for advertising, other than approve it in a council meeting.
So, I, Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Josh, I don't know if you can elaborate a little bit on, on what we did as far as getting the word out there. I know, I know for sure we put it on our mobile, or basically, on all of our message boards out there. I'm not sure what other advertising we did this round, but if there's any ideas on what we could do to expand that.
Sure, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I believe that we pretty much put it out, put a press release out, and it did get picked up in the paper, did get picked on, on radio, and then we also put out on our social media channels.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're actively advertising this, so.
Well, and we should, if we start tomorrow, we have the whole month of October before it starts, so that should be enough, right?
Yeah, I would just like to see...
Especially in all those channels.
Yeah, I would just like to see more, more interest, more applications to select from, and not just receive one or two.
And I believe we had four or maybe five pre-submitted meetings, so we had more groups that were interested and looked into it, but they didn't quite have projects that will qualify, or they, in the end, decided they didn't have the time to put in and put an application in. So, we did have more groups that reached out with an interest in applying.
So, knowing that, because I did not know that, thank you for that added information, but knowing that, were there common, with the other applicants who didn't come forward to actually go through the application process, were there some obstacles that we could mitigate in, put into the program, or have we done that, or was it something that they just couldn't overcome, no matter what?
I remember one of the applicants, we said that they could apply for the facade improvement grant, and so there was another avenue. The more applicants that we have apply for these limited funds, the less that could be attributed to each one of the projects. So, that's one of the things we're looking at. If you have multiple applicants that are applying for the 30,000 or 25,000, and all of their projects have a greater need, and they know that they might have a smaller amount awarded, then they may not be able to move forward with the project, because they need to match more than 50%, because less funds would be available.
Okay.
And so, that was one, that was also one of the concerns.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Counsel, for Josh or for Tim? Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Tim. So, Carl, we probably need to make a motion stating, accepting item 6A with proposed revision from staff.
Yeah, we'd want to, I think, we'd do a separate motion just to close that solicitation.
Okay, so cancel that.
To cancel that solicitation, then, because I'm being pedantic, then have another motion to accept staff's recommendation on the changes on the program.
Okay, so can we have a motion then, Counsel, counseling that grant program?
Shall move.
Call second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And then, can we have a motion approving staff revisions for this initiative grant program?
Shall move.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Item number 6B, Arizona State Land Department Purchasing Process. At their September 2nd, 2025 meeting, the City Council requested that staff bring back a report regarding the process for acquiring state-owned land and available parcels within the city limits. This presentation will provide the City Council with an overview of the process for purchasing land from the Arizona State Land Department. Including the required application steps, due diligence studies, appraisal, and board approvals, and public auction process. It will also outline the associated costs, timelines, and potential risks involved to support council's consideration of whether to direct staff to pursue specific parcels of interest and initiate acquiring a pre-application meeting. Up to council discretion. Terry, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Glad to be here. I am here to talk to you about the purchasing land from the Arizona State Land Department, and what we're looking at, let me see. Okay, so the purpose of the presentation is to give you an outline that, of the five main steps, which is the application, the review, due diligence, appraisal, approval, and the auction. The goal is to understand the process and the decision points before we make any decisions and begin anything. So, the step one is the application submittal. The very first thing that we have to do is we reach out to the Arizona Land Department, and we talk to them about if the parcel is available, and if it is, is, are there, has there been any other interested parties? And then we set up a pre-application meeting to, with them, to go over all of the steps. They want to make sure that we understand everything before we move forward. At that point, after we've had that meeting, we file an application at thelandarizona.gov, we create an account, complete the application, attach any maps or exhibits that might be there, and there's a $2,000 non-refundable application fee for this. Okay, so then, we go to title, contracts, and review. The review, we, with this, we go and look at the title, the legal description, improvements, classifications on that, if there's any utilities there, and then we go through the registration to make sure everything's been completed with the Arizona Corporation Commission, as far as our entity goes. The estimated timeline on that is three to four weeks. And then we do due diligence. At that point, we have four studies that we have to do. One's a Phase 1 environmental, an ALTA survey, a title report, and a cultural resources survey. All of these things need to be taken care of during this whole entire process. The Arizona State Land Department orders the appraisals, and they're paid upfront by us, the applicant. So, the typical cost for doing all of the due diligence is upwards of $50,000. Department issues an authorization letter to allow us to go on to the land to do all of these due diligence items. And one of the things that is important to understand here is that the ALTA survey does not have to be completed, but it has to be started so that we can do the, start the appraisal. So, there's certain aspects of that ALTA survey that need to be incorporated in that, and that includes the boundaries, the exact acreage that's out there, access points, major easements, encroachments, and any visible improvements that affect value. These elements allow the appraiser to establish the property's market value and highest and best use. Once these are submitted, the State Land Department invoices us for the appraisal and retains a state-approved appraiser. Typical upfront costs, like I said, can be over $50,000, and they do not engage that appraiser until we have paid the money for that appraisal. So, then that puts us into our next step, where the appraisal sets the minimum bid for the auction. If the appraisal comes in too high at this time in the process, we can pause the process and choose not to proceed with an auction, and then we don't have to pay for all of those other due diligence type of reports that are required. If we like what we see and the appraisal's good, then we can move forward with getting those other due diligence reports. At that point, we move on to step five, which is auction and public notice period. At this point, it must advertise for sale and imprint for 10 weeks. The cost for that advertising is approximately $5,000, and then all the bids are submitted, and the highest bid wins. So, the timeline and the consideration for this is that the estimated timeline can take nine to 12 months, depending on where we are in the process, when the State Land Development Department meets and approves certain steps. And then, the thing that we have to worry about is if we're outbid, and somebody comes in, we get everything that we've put into it money-wise reimbursed, except for that $2,000 non-refundable application fee. If we are the successful bidder, the land is awarded, and the costs are non-refundable altogether. So, with that, we have some recommendations. The pre-application meeting, which is a Zoom meeting that we recommend, and a budget for the upfront costs and a long timeline, not to expect this to happen overnight. We have to also understand the potential risks of being outbid. If, there's just no guarantee that we can get that, and there is the possibility of being outbid. So, next steps, we discuss potential parcels of interest, and authorize staff to initiate a pre-application meeting, and we have some parcels that I've outlined, that are four large parcels within the city limits, and they're the ones that are outlined in pink. So, you can see, top left, there's two, and then, one between the 40 and 66, there's one, and one below the 40. And if we go to the next slide, the first one that's up at the top is over off of North Stockton Hill. That is between Fountain Hill and Grace Neil Parkway, so it goes, and encompasses, like, south, just south of the fishing game office over there. The other one that's to the south of that is off of Selma, and it goes to south of Sierra Vista, north of the, which is just north of the Arizona Financial Credit Union, and there are no direct property tie-ins with Stockton Hill Road. The next slide shows the Louise, going through one of the parcels, and this is the one that is south of the 40. It is bordered by Southern, Airfield, Sage, and Cherokee. The bottom slide, the bottom section over on the right is off of Flying Fortress, and it is, the boundary streets on that are Flying Fortress, El Camino, Airway, and Berry. So, this concludes my discussion, and I'm here to answer any questions, if you might have them.
Thank you, Terry. Counsel, any questions for Terry? Yes, Counsel Savage.
This is the only thing I'll probably talk about tonight, so, counsel blessings. Is that cost per property?
It is.
It is. Is there, if we don't go for them all at once, is there a priority that you guys are looking for, is which lot do you prefer?
Mayor, Councilman Savage, that's a great question. Staff's recommendation, I think, looking at all the, the four parcels, staff's recommendation would be initially, the, the property adjacent to Flying Fortress Parkway. That one seems like it would have the most potential at this point. Another one right there with it, though, would be the one just south of Kingman Crossing. You know, we own the 140 acres to the south of that. The, the difference between the two, I think, the, the six, the, the state section south of Kingman Crossing, you would likely see more residential development, more subdivisions, those types of things, whereas the, the section off of Flying Fortress, you would likely see more industrial-type uses, more airport-compatible type uses, so.
Thank you. So, we do all our due diligence and it goes to auction. So, we'll be bidding against just about everybody and their brother, correct?
There is that potential, yes.
And so, we're going to be having to fight against developers, probably, on that, too?
There is that potential, however...
Well, I would just say, my response to that would be, ultimately, if that land's getting developed, that's more development in Kingman. You know, ideally, if, if we get it, there's an opportunity for leases and generating revenue for the city, but if a private developer were to get it and to develop it, that's also a benefit for the city. So, it's really, I, I think either way, it's a win-win.
All right, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Terry. Any other questions?
I have.
Yes.
I'll go after.
Counsel Staley.
Thank you. At this time, we have not designated a project like this in our capital improvements. We don't have the funding for this, is that correct?
So, Mayor, Councilman Staley, that is correct. So, this would be, looking at, at this type of a project, as Terry mentioned, you're looking at least a, a year before that, before that, the lump sum would be due. So, because of that year process, the, the upfront cost of $2,000 and the $50,000, I think, basically, you'd be looking at that range, that you'd be looking at spending this fiscal year. So, that would take a, a council item to, to look at those types of funds to, to, to address those costs. The, the larger cost, once we were able to get that appraisal and, and get all of our due diligence done, that would be in next year, so that would be something we could include in the FY '27 budget.
Okay.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
I had a couple of questions. I'm not sure if I'm tracking where Counsel Staley's going, but what would the city do that would be more of a benefit than a private investor? I mean, we're not land developers. What, what could we possibly do? We do have the land that's on the other side of Kingman Crossing, and, you know, we're in talks about what to do with that land, so I'm just curious if staff has any forethought as to if we pick up this parcel? And then my second question is, do you just submit an LOI to the state, or do you just pick and choose and say, hey, I would like to purchase this section, and, you know? So, what does that process look like? I don't, I don't think you covered it, but maybe, you know?
So the pre-application meeting, prior to you sit down with them and you find out if that property is under contract or somebody else is already pursuing it with doing the due diligence, or if it's just sitting there and available. At that point, we go ahead and do that application and pay that $2,000 application fee, which starts the whole process rolling. Once that first month goes by where they've looked at all of the commission, corporate commission to make sure that we're registered correctly and that we are somebody who can go in there and purchase, then they assign us a representative that walks us through the whole entire process.
So it's really not available for sale, per se, until somebody sits down and says, I want to buy it?
Correct.
Okay, that answers that question. Now back to question number one.
Madam Vice Mayor, I would see, so looking at the different properties, as I mentioned, the Flying Fortress property, you have a different type market than you would the property south of Kingman Crossing. With the Flying Fortress property, I would recommend that that would be the same type of use that we would see for the airport land that we're currently seeking to get released. Basically, it would be an expansion of that industrial area. We had Mrs. Tackett Hicks here tonight talking about KDP managers and their industrial-type uses along the west side of Flying Fortress. This would be very similar to the process that we currently go through with any of the industrial land that we have out at the airport now and that we will be going through with the area that we're gonna get released.
Okay. I'm not sure that I support this, but if I were to support this, that would be the only parcel that makes sense to me, so. For that reason. But again, you know, then we gotta sell it and then we gotta, we gotta find a buyer and we gotta, I just, we have a lot to do as the city. I'm not sure that we want to add this to our plate.
Good point, Vice Mayor. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Counsel Dykens.
Well, it's not really a question, it's more of a statement. I'm the troublemaker that asked for this to come to council. It was after the league training that we went to down in Phoenix, and I attended the state land class. And that's what got me interested in this whole concept in the first place. And I agree, the only one that I would personally be in favor of pursuing is the one that's close to the airport, which actually abuts to the property that we're trying to get through the FAA. To me, I think that would be a huge benefit to the city long-term. Yeah, it's gonna take some money out of pocket, but the investment coming back to the city long-term, I think, is huge. I think it's something, personally, I think it's something we should at least pursue. It's not very much of an investment just to get, to number one, find out if it's even available, or number two, to at least get to the appraisal level and find out what it really appraises at. And is that something then the city can pursue?
Thank you, Counsel. Actually, Counsel, what did you?
No, I thought Keith.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I think it's good we're being proactive, looking at what properties are available in our city limits. I do like this property that's off Flying Fortress. My concern is, is we have a lot of other projects going on. But even if we stir the excitement and do get a developer to, you know, jump in and take this from us, we win.
Very true.
But I think it's something that I would entertain, but I'm just worried about all the other projects we have, infrastructure-wise, finishing the road to the airport, Kingman Crossing. I mean, we got a lot on our plate. And we've seen what the appraisals have come in at on the airport land. That's my concerns, but I think it's a great idea to look at this and maybe stir the pot and get somebody excited about it. And if the price was right, we, you know, I agree with Councilmember Dykens that the return on value back to the city long-term is huge.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Counsel Savage.
If I understood correctly, anybody can open this up if they choose to and contact the state. So if we play a dog and pony show and say, hey, we're gonna do this, maybe we can chump some people in, right?
It's possible.
This is my thinking.
I was gonna say, we've already brought attention to it by just me talking about it. Good point, though. Okay, any other comments or questions? Terry, thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay. Carl, I don't think there's any action need to be happened on this at this point in time?
If council would like to provide any direction, now would be the time. But if not, no direction is required also.
I don't think we're at this point in time because of all the other projects. As Counsel Walker mentioned, I think we appreciate the, and I know there's interest, but as far as right now, I don't think there's going to be anything at this point in time. So thank you. Okay, item number seven, department reports. Item 7A, Kingman Golf Hole, number 16, drainage. Turn some time over to Mike.
Really quick, before Mike starts, we're having a little bit of a connectivity issue with sharing in this room. I can assure you that our streaming is still happening on the backside, so the public is seeing what's happening. But I'm gonna see if I can reconnect for this room really quick.
All set?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I don't like it.
Sorry.
Let's try this again. At the September 16th council meeting, I believe it was Councilman Dykens that asked for a report about the possibility of using the hole number 16, a little depressed area with the pipe and everything, using it for stormwater retention. So the engineering department looked into this. Let's see. There we go. What we determined is it looks like it's already being used that way. There's a 24-inch pipe that connects that area to a similar depressed area over on hole 19. So, I mean, if I had to guess, somebody actually probably designed this to act like the retention. It's got a drainage area. The drainage area is about 43 acres. We came up with some peak discharges for the 100-year storm event and the 10-year storm event. And we put everything into a computer program that's used for routing flows through a retention basin. And we came up with some results. This is a engineering presentation, so unfortunately, we have graphs, which nobody likes that. You can just pay attention to the graphs on the left side, left-hand side of the slide. Those are the 100-year results. The graph on the bottom is the one that's really important. It's flow versus time. So the big peak there is the flow that comes into the pond, and the little peak is the flow that actually leaves the pond. So it's working just like an ordinary retention basin would work, where flow goes in and less flow comes out. This pond for 100-year storm event would store about two and a half acre feet, which is about 800,000 gallons. It would get about seven feet deep for a 100-year storm. You might be thinking to yourself, well, I've never seen it actually hold water before. I talked to Mike Muersmann about it a little bit, and he doesn't recall it holding water. But on the other hand, a 100-year storm for a little two-hour event is about two and a half inches in two hours, which is a pretty intense storm. Even a 10-year storm is about an inch and a half in two hours. So there's a good chance that this little detention area actually hasn't seen a storm event like that in recent history than you might can recall. But given the fact that it would be inundated with seven feet of water in a 100-year storm, I don't think I would do anything to it. You can tell from this map that if it gets over eight feet deep, that the outflow's gonna go right towards this residential area here. So I would be concerned that if you did anything to try to make it hold even more water, that if we did get a really big storm, you'd end up with possibly a problem. So I think right now, it's perfect the way it is, and I wouldn't recommend making any changes to it. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Questions? Counsel Dykens, since you brought this forward, do you have anything?
Not a question, but more of a statement. Thank you for getting this information. I'm not an engineer, I just thought the graphs were pretty. The part that caught my attention was the fact that that 100-year storm would be up to seven foot and the hole is up to eight feet. So with seeing that, then I realized, okay, chances of needing to do anything to it are slim to none. So I'm good with knowing that. I appreciate the effort that you made to explain that to me.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments or questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Number eight, announcements by Mayor, council members, and city manager. Mr. Walsh.
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Counsel Walker? Counsel Savage?
Nothing tonight.
Counsel Ward?
Nothing tonight.
Counsel Staley? Counsel Dykens?
Nothing.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Nothing for me.
Man, you guys are all too quiet for me. I have all kinds of stuff. I do, would like to thank all of our citizens that come out to the Anti-Divine Days Parade, and of course, supported the rodeo, too. I think it was a fun time for everybody. And I know Counsel Ward did a great job driving the golf cart that we were, I was in with him. So I appreciate that. Do have some great events, of course, we had First Friday, Last Friday. I know Josh already took off, but Tim, do we know, sort of attendance-wise?
Don't have numbers yet, but we should have them sometime this week.
I think it was pretty busy again. Weather is so much nicer now, and so should've been a great thing. We do have, of course, our Parks Department. If you go online and check and see what our Parks Department is offering, they're offering salsa dancing and salsa-making on October 8th. There's more information online. October 10th and 11th, the Route 66 Fest. That is a big deal at Lewis Kingman Park. So I'd remind everybody to attend that. And then, of course, October 15th, the 19th Annual Walk Away From Drugs and Kingman, Keep Kingman Safe. And as we've mentioned in past meetings, that is the largest walk-away-from-drugs event in the state. So, and we are proud of it, that we are leading the charge on that. So bragging rights again, we appreciate that for Kingman. Anyway, once again, that's all I have. Item number nine, council requests for future reports and updates. Okay, seeing none? Item number 10, executive session. 10A, Airport Development Lease Negotiations with Atlas Development Update. Staff is requesting that council go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A4 to discuss contract negotiations with Atlas Development. Can we have a motion then for us to go into executive session?
Some of.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Once again, everybody here in chambers, we appreciate you being here tonight and participating and being a great citizen and viewing what happens at City Council. Have a good evening. Have a good evening.